Item 10, we're going to move right to item E, which is receive report and provide direction to staff regarding decommissioning PG&E's line 132 in the Crestmore neighborhood. Staff report please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Harry Burrows and I'm the City's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. Sorry about that. Item before the City Council tonight is to present information regarding the decommissioning of PG&E's line 132 gas transmission pipeline. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to seek input from the Council and the public. No action by the City Council is required. What I wanted to do was take a second and just familiarize or re-familiarize everyone with line 132 as it runs through San Bruno, in particular, the Crestmore neighborhood. And what we're looking at here is this red line represents line 132 as it runs through the city. I-280 is here, Skyline Boulevard is here, and this is San Bruno Avenue. The black line that runs down San Bruno Avenue in parallel to I-280 is PG&E's line 109. Within weeks after the gas explosion and fire, Chris Johns, president of PG&E, made a commitment to the city that the portion of line 132 that runs through the city from the San Andreas Station to the Healy Station would be deactivated and decommissioned. And those two locations are shown here as well. Following through on that commitment, PG&E applied for and the city issued an encroachment permit for work related to the decommissioning in September of 2011, one year after the explosion occurred. PG&E subsequently performed work on the pipeline that included purging the line of any trace gases, capping discrete sections of the pipe, and installing fill tubes for future injection of slurry into the abandoned pipeline. PG&E's original intent was to leave the pipe in an empty state for a period of two to three years in case access was needed for any ongoing or future investigations. Notwithstanding the assurances from PG&E, the desire of the community since the explosion has been to make sure that the pipeline can never be used again in the future for gas transmission. There's also been a very vocal preference from many in the neighborhood to remove the pipeline from the ground in its entirety. The city is opposed to the pipeline remaining empty for two to three years, and given the desires of the community, has asked PG&E to explore the removal of the pipeline. PG&E and city staff have been in discussions for many months regarding the pipeline abandonment. As a result of these discussions, PG&E has provided an analysis of the impacts of three potential scenarios for the pipeline. These include a full removal of the pipeline through the neighborhood, slurry filling of the pipeline through the neighborhood, and what we call a hybrid solution that involves removing portions of the pipeline as well as filling portions of the pipeline through the neighborhood. I'll briefly describe each option now. The full removal option involves removing of the pipe from the ground. The work would be done in approximately 400-foot sections, so the total length is, you know, over 4,000 feet. We've broken into 400-foot sections. PG&E would concentrate their work in those particular areas. The excavation, the work area, would be a minimum of 25 foot wide. And I'll show you in a second what that means, in particular, in certain portions of the neighborhood where the streets are narrow. The full removal would limit the access in some of the narrow streets. It may involve removal of curb gutter and sidewalk in many areas. Complete road closures would be required, and traffic restrictions would be required as well. There would be possible service disruptions for water and sewer to some of the residences. There's a possibility of some gas odors. There would be a tremendous amount of dirt, dust, and disruption, and for about a four-and-a-half month period, there will be about 30 workers on the site to accomplish this. Again, it would be very impactive, but the public's desire to get rid of the pipe would be achieved. This slide illustrates some of those 400-foot work sections. Those are those long lines, red lines there. So, work would be accomplished within that 400-foot section, and then it would move to the next section. The area north of Clermont Drive up to Sneath, this portion, Glenview, where the pipeline runs, is very narrow. It's narrower in that section of the neighborhood than it is to the south. The roadway to the south is wider. In that area, given a 25-foot work area, it's going to be required to essentially close the roadway during the pipeline removal. This picture illustrates an excavation that was made in one area near the pipeline back in last September, and I think it's a good indication of what those impacts would look This black line right here represents an extension of the curb line. So what you can see here is just to excavate down to the pipeline, they've had to cut away of some of the sidewalk and take away the curb and gutter as well. They're about eight foot out into the roadway with the excavation, and as you can imagine, for the pipeline removal, there's a need to have trucks beside the excavation to put the material into, also trucks beside the excavation to place the pieces of pipe in as they come out. So, this area over here would be mostly taken up with the work area, the width of the work area. There would be a width of roadway, probably eight foot or so, that would be available for emergency vehicle access and access for residents during certain periods of the day. The next slide illustrates the same thing, but just looking north. You can see where those gentlemen are standing on the left-hand side of the photo. They're standing on just a small portion of the sidewalk. The sidewalk has been cut away, and the pipeline runs up the street. That, in each 400-foot section, they will have to go in and do a similar removal of the curb gutter and sidewalk. The next option is the slurry filling, and this is what PG&E originally proposed. However, their desire was to wait two to three years, which, again, is something that the city is opposed to. The slurry filling involves the injection of concrete slurry into the pipeline. The slurry will be mixed on-site using a process that essentially adds air to create a lighter mix to ensure the complete filling of the pipe, yet will still harden into a solid concrete mass so that the pipe can never be used again. In terms of impacts, that has very minimal impacts to the residents, particularly compared to the full removal option. Very little street work will be required. As I stated previously, PG&E, as part of the original work last September under that encroachment permit, did cap certain sections of pipe and put fill pipes in for future slurry. Those are at the street level within boxes that can be opened up, and the slurry pumped into it, and then the boxes, top of the box is replaced. There will be no need for complete road closures with the slurry filling option, but there may be some parking restrictions. There's going to be concrete trucks and mixing tanks to provide for the slurry injection into the pipe. No gas odors are anticipated, however, in the event that there are some present, PG&E will have equipment there to scrub any odors coming out of the pipe. This effort will entail a workforce of about 10 workers on average, and will take about three weeks in duration from start to finish through the neighborhood. Again, this is the least impactful option, but the public's desire to remove the pipe is not achieved, but it does ensure that the pipe will never be used again. The last option that we asked them to explore is what we're calling the hybrid option. And the theory behind this option is, can we achieve a little bit of both? Meeting some of the public's desire to get some of the pipeline removed as well as minimize the impacts to the neighborhood. And so, what we've done is identify a couple possible sections of removal that are in areas that aren't fronted by residences. So in those locations, we could go in, have PG&E remove the pipeline. It would still be disruptive to traffic through the neighborhood, would still require detours, some localized road closures, but mostly, you know, probably one-way traffic, traffic control to keep traffic through those areas. The remaining portion here, besides those two sections that are illustrated, would be filled with slurry. This is just a summary of that. The hybrid approach, as I said, would still be disruptive to the neighborhood, but not impact directly any existing homes. The duration of this would be about eight weeks. Primarily, the largest impact is going to be during the removal process. There may be a little time adjustment depending on if one or two sections are taken out. Again, this concentrates the highest impacts in the least disruptive areas, and it may meet the need of the public to remove at least a portion of the pipeline through the So given the concerns that we've heard from the public, as well as all the factors involved, staff is recommending that the hybrid solution be pursued with PG&E, and we will work with PG&E to determine what's the best location, which section, or which sections, whether one or two sections are the best to be removed. Before I open up to questions or comments, I did want to take a second and talk about a portion of line 132 that was discovered subsequent to the pipeline explosion. And this pipe was unknown to the city. It was abandoned as part of the original construction of the subdivision in 1956. So Crestmore Canyon was filled, the old pipeline followed the old ground, the canyon was filled, and a portion of the pipeline, new pipeline, was constructed at, you know, three or four feet below grade where the current pipe is. That pipeline, the majority of it, is deep. It's been abandoned since 1956. It was not filled when it was abandoned. Now that the city knows about it, the city's asked PG&E to fill that pipe with slurry so that it's abandoned properly. Filling with slurry or removal meets the current abandonment procedures in the pipeline industry. So PG&E has provided a plan to the city that the city's consultants are reviewing for that abandonment, filling with slurry. Any work done on that 1948 section of pipe will be done concurrent with the work we just discussed related to the abandonment of the 1956 portion of line 132. And this exhibit is just meant to illustrate approximately where that section of deep pipe is located, and that is essentially a little bit north of Clermont, down Glenview, to just a little bit south of Earl Avenue. So with that, we're here to answer any questions or comments that the Council may have. In addition, there's representatives from PG&E in the audience, should the Council wish to direct any questions directly to them.
Harry, what do these three options do to our plan to reconstruct our infrastructure? And they're the water and the sewer lines and all the stuff we have to do. What kind of delay is involved in each of those scenarios?
The project that was first, which I'm going to get to next, is a Phase II utility project. And what that project will do is replace utilities, water, sewer, storm drain, in essentially this area, the fire-damaged area of the neighborhood. So as you can see, the possible removal of this portion of pipe is in conflict with that work. We have discussed that with PG&E. We think that we can phase our work with their work such that it doesn't impact our schedule, but to say that it has no impact would not be true. It does have an impact, or does have a scheduling impact that we will need to work around. In terms of the slurry filling, the slurry filling doesn't really impact our construction work, plant construction work at all. Complete removal would not have an impact on the current phase of construction, I mean, on the future phases of construction. It would, again, have some impacts related to the proposed Phase II utilities, which, again, we would need to work with PG&E to ensure that those impacts are minimized.
Okay, and could all of these, whatever we decide to do, be started at the same time, or is there a wait period for one phase over another? You mentioned they want to leave it open for investigation, but that is, that's all, you know, off the table if we decide on a slurry fill or...
Yeah, PG&E has agreed to fill the pipeline now and not wait the two to three years. Either fill the pipeline or remove it, and not wait the two to three years that they originally had desired. The schedule that, they're fully aware of our schedule with our Phase II utilities. They have a contractor on board. They've been discussing the project with their contractor, and they have done some preliminary design work for the removal of these sections shown here, should we go with the hybrid option. They are probably four to six weeks away from today, if we said go tonight, from actually starting that construction work.
Okay. Any other questions of staff, Vice Mayor?
Harry, have any of the residents been informed of these options, or at least in a casual, you know, discussion as far as the desire to have it removed, especially the residents on Glenview?
Yeah. We've had no recent formal discussions with anyone. We have had some informal discussions with some of the residents in the neighborhood as we're up there doing some of the work. I think one thing that all of us can remember is during the community meeting that was held in late January, when we did mention the fact that we were in discussions with PG&E about removing the pipeline, that was met with full applause from the audience. So we know that there's a strong desire out there to remove at least some of the pipeline through the neighborhood.
But I would like to add to that, though, that this is the first time we have had in the last few days any kind of formal presentation. It was brought up, I believe, in January 27th, the Church of the Highlands, when everyone said, "Let's just get it out of there," and it all sounded well and good, but we instructed staff to research with PG&E what the ramifications of removing it completely, filling it, or the hybrid finally came up. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had all options on the table and understood it very well ourselves, but this is really the first time that we have had an opportunity to visit with staff as a council and hear these presentations, so you should know that. Any other questions before we open it up to the public?
After.
After, okay. I see a number of people in the audience probably want to speak on this. Would you like to? Please step to the podium and tell us your name and your street.
Hello, how do you do? I live on Clermont Drive. Right after the explosion, I did go and testify in front of the Senate, and my main goal with many of the neighbors was to get the pipe out of our neighborhood. And PG&E agreed that they would not have that pipe run through our neighborhood, that they would get rid of it. So I'm, my concern is that we have a clear written commitment that they'll never use the pipeline again for natural gas service, either for transmission line or distribution line. I had another concern about the 1948 pipe. I was out of town and I got a call from a neighbor. Apparently, they had opened up that pipe for something, and the smell of gas was throughout the neighborhood, so everybody started to panic. That is a concern to me, that they're not properly, I guess, purging the gas out of the pipe. So if we keep the pipes there, we need to make sure that they're properly purging the gas out of the pipelines, because I don't know too much about gas, but I think it stays in the pipe, even though there's not gas running through it. I'm not an expert, but I think the gas stays in the pipe, and I'm not an expert, so. What I did is I contacted Richard Cooperwitz. He was at one of our town hall meetings, and he really impressed me with his knowledge, and I contacted him to get his opinion. And he, let's see, he says towns usually want to keep their options open concerning the right-of-way agreements crossing their public lands. So filling the pipeline with concrete is, could be an overkill, and precludes the town from possibly granting a right-of-way to another party, for somebody to lay cable or fiber optics, for example, within old pipes that, if the opportunity presents itself. This could save digging up a lot of the town that can be very disruptive. But it's a very emotional issue to keep that pipe in our, under our streets, not knowing that it was there. So just hearing you tonight, I mean, my two cents would be taking parts of the pipe out, but making sure that the pipe that remains is purged properly, so that we don't have the possibility of another explosion. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On that note, to the City Attorney, do we have any issues with right-of-way or encroachments or anything if that pipe is either, if we take the option of hybrid or fill it in place?
I don't think so, but I think Harry might have a comment about that.
Well, if I may, let me address a couple comments that were brought up here. I think in terms of purging the pipeline, the portions of the pipeline that PG&E decommissioned last year have been purged. Again, there may be some residual trace gas or odors, muck and cap, in those pipes. Like I said, PG&E, as part of the filling, slurry filling of the pipeline, is committed to having equipment there that should any odors be present, they will scrub those prior to the releasing in the atmosphere. In terms of the 1948 pipe, we just received last week PG&E's proposal for slurry filling that pipeline. It includes some detailed technical information about how they plan on dealing with the odors that we know are present in that pipe. Our specialized gas consultant is looking at that now, and they will address any concerns that, or raise any concerns that they have, and PG&E will address those prior to filling that pipe.
Okay.
And then I think in terms of the right-of-way issue, there's no right-of-way issue. I think the issue that was brought up, that was a valid one, you do have a 30-inch diameter pipe in the city street that's, you know, filled with concrete that in the future, should you need to go in and do maintenance on any water services or sewer laterals, it is an obstruction that you have to deal with.
Okay. And it's an obstruction that we've dealt with before?
Correct.
All right, okay. Anyone else like to address the Council? Please state your name and your street.
My name's Dennis, I'm based in Anzoil, I live on Glenview Drive.
Okay.
I'd prefer that you just fill it with the slurry and the concrete, whatever it's going to do. There's been enough construction and disruption in the neighborhood already. You know, I know some people want it out of there, but they don't necessarily live right there on the street. And I live on the Sneed Lane side of Glenview, the narrow part, and I saw when they dug up the other piece of pipe, I mean, it was a pretty major undertaking, so I would just prefer that you did that. And maybe send out a survey to everybody who lives on Glenview or in the affected areas and see how they feel about it before you make your decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Maria Bar.
Did you pull that down, Maria? There you go.
Yes. My name is Maria Bar, and I happily moved in into my neighborhood since 1976. I've been extremely happy, joyful, wonderful neighborhood, but since the explosion, my life has been a turmoil. Every day, I'm very nervous. I look out my window, and there's a lot of construction, there's a lot of trucks, there's a lot of activity, and it's all for a good cause, because all my neighbors' homes are being rebuilt, and things are looking up. I'm back in my home now, and I'm happy. But hearing the presentation that was done today has convinced me that slurry is the best option for all of us. Excavating the pipe and spending all that time digging and the narrowness of the streets is an unknown factor. We don't know what's down there, how things will settle, how rains will affect us. For me, I will feel very confident that the slurry filling in of the concrete will accomplish the job, and then it will be safe. Of course, if anything comes up that we don't know about, I would like PG&E to be forth with and tell us, be honest with everybody. But for me, the option of the slurry would be the best option. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the Council on this and get your feelings and opinions?
My name is Elizabeth Coons. I live on Clermont Drive. I'm fine with the slurry filling, but I want to know, what is PG&E going to raise my rates to, to ensure my safety in my neighborhood? Because every time something's come up, every one of them later comes back, well, PG&E says, "Well, we'll have to raise the rates in order to pay for that." I think we've paid enough in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Just my two cents, you've paid way too much, and we all have paid way too much, but there are discussions ongoing, which the city is taking part in with the CPUC, and a lot of this, including the settlement that the city received and other settlements going forward that are coming from shareholders and not ratepayers, and that's pretty substantiated. So, you know, there's more discussions going forward, I understand that completely, but we as a city are watching that very, very closely. Yes?
Hi, my name's Doug Coons.
Did you pull that up a little closer there, Doug? Thank you.
My name's Doug Coons. I live on Clermont Drive. I'm not sure, I think we're making a little bit too much big a deal out of the disruption. The neighborhood's been a disruption since the explosion occurred. It's going to continue, and we know that that's going to continue. I mean, just, I live right there where Plymouth comes down and connects to Clermont at the east end, and we just live through the Phase 1 water, which is probably more difficult putting in a new pipe than taking out an old one. And it didn't take anywhere near the 25 feet. They still had to dig down real deep. It looked like it was about six feet deep. That digging is going to continue, I understand, until all of the water majority is in the neighborhood, and we're going to keep doing sewers. So this disruption is going to continue for who knows how long. So whether we choose to fill it with slurry, remove the whole thing, or remove part of it, I don't think we should make such a big deal out of the disruption, since we're going to have it regardless.
Harry, would you have any comments on replacing a water line versus removing a pipe like this?
Well, I think the future utility replacement within the entire neighborhood is going to be very disruptive, and it will last, you know, probably, with the next project starting construction in May, it will probably last for nine to 12 months, barring weather delays. So this neighborhood will have a lot of disruption for utility construction in the next year. That is a very correct statement. I think the difference with the PG&E line 132 removal, particularly in the stretch of Glenview between Clermont and Plymouth, that will require pretty much full closure of the roadway to accomplish the pipeline removal. The installation of a new pipeline is a little bit cleaner from a construction standpoint because we're not dodging a lot of those utility crossings that this pipe is going to have to dodge. And the material will have to be excavated out, put into trucks, hauled away, then another truck will have to come in to put the piece of pipe that's just been cut out of the ground onto, and then equipment and more fill will have to be brought back in to compact and backfill. So it's a multi-step... So it's a multi-step operation that does take up a wider portion of the road than the installation of a single water line, unfortunately.
Okay. Anyone else like to tell us your thoughts?
I just want, do want to clarify one thing. The gentleman who spoke earlier about the disruption to his home, and I think he lived in the section north of Clermont on Glenview, again, the hybrid option that we're looking at would not be removing a portion of the pipe in that section. It would be to the south where the road is wider.
Okay. Do we have engineering representatives from PG&E here this evening?
Yes.
And I have a quick question for them, if they could step to the podium. The big concern, and I have it also, is that in fact you can scrub this gas if in fact we decide that we want to just fill this pipe up. Is this neighborhood going to, you know, be disrupted again psychologically with the smell of gas? It's really been a problem.
I understand, and our plan is to, as we inject the slurry, to have a, all of the gas that's coming out the air, that's, as it's being filled, the air will be ejected and will be scrubbed of any odor. So that's, that's in the plan, and it's in the plan that was presented, and also in the plan that's being presented for filling the IT, the D-10 line.
And is the scrub just a big, another word for a filter, or what?
The exact type of filtration system, I'm not 100% familiar. I believe it's carbon-based, that absorbs the gas, but definitely eliminates odors.
Okay. Any other questions for PG&E while they're here?
To the chair?
Michael?
I'm curious about the extremities of this pipe. We know that in this section that we're talking about, either removing or filling, there's no gas that's going to go through there, but on either end of it, there are some connections still going upstream to other facilities. And so I'm wondering about how those things are capped and whether there's going to be continued monitoring on those other ends at either side of the neighborhood.
Okay. I can verify precisely how they're capped, but I believe that they're capped and that they've been isolated from the pipes that are going through the streets. And those pipes have been capped and inured at the present time, when they're filled or removed. If they're filled, then there's no way that they can ever be utilized again.
Right, but Line 132 at either end is still pressurized and there is gas in there?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm, I can verify for you how it's capped. I don't know precisely the detail of how it's capped. I understand their method is to put a pipe cap. I can't tell you the exact details of the connections.
Okay, thank you.
Rico?
Not being in the engineering or technical, you're, obviously you can get us back to clarification, but I think what's important is that the residents also, as well as the council and staff, want to have the clarification in language that's understandable and makes sense, that it's very clear to anyone and everyone exactly what Councilmember Salazar asked about the odor. The odor is a concern, and even though it's, that's what gas does, what it does to this neighborhood, what it does to the community, is something we want to have some assurances with whatever decision is made, that we mitigate that at all possible. I know you were going to get some clarification on that, but I think that's something that's very important to us all as this community. So if we can have some more assurances and exactly what the filter is, or how it works, and how it operates, and how that mitigates that potential problem.
I think that's a very good point. We had a small, what PG&E would probably consider a routine incident a few months ago in a small distribution line, which is very, very small. And there was a smell of gas. We evacuated the neighborhood, we had police and fire there, we had helicopters circling overhead, and my cellphone was going crazy, wanting to know about the new explosion in San Bruno. So, and this was way, way far away from Crestwood and Crestmore and Glenview. So it's a very, very sensitive issue in our city, and it has to be taken very, very seriously. Any other questions or comments?
To the chair?
Michael?
I'd ask one more question, please. I'm also concerned about the older pipe, the 1948 pipe, and around the practice of abandonment of these pipes, is it fairly typical practice to leave the older pipes in the ground? And I'm wondering on the older one, what the metallurgical composition is of that, and if there's any potential contaminants from the metals that could leach into the groundwater?
Okay, so on the metal, I can check on the exact metallurgy, but typically it's carbon steel pipe. So there's no heavy metals and the carbon steel is usually steel. So I'm going to verify on that and go back to you.
Okay. Well, given the age of the pipe, I would think that maybe older materials, maybe lead might be in those pipes, and I'm just wondering if we just fill that and leave it there, if there's going to be potential contaminants years down the road?
Okay. Well, I can't tell you exactly the lead and metallurgy, but I will obviously verify and get back.
If you could get us an answer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from PG&E? Public? Any more? Yes, please.
Darlene Isola, Clermont Drive, and perhaps this question would be directed to Mr. Burrows. We had the pleasure of meeting him one morning on the street. It would be very nice, I think, for the residents of our community to possibly get some kind of a timeline as to what is going on in each separate phase of these projects, because as it is now, there is one thing going on for several weeks, and then we hear of something else going on. And we residents seem to think that it might take as long as five years for our little neighborhood to come back together again, and that might be underestimating, but there is so much that needs to go on, and there is still so much stress when we go by that site daily and we see all the construction, because the construction reminds us of what happened to our community. So perhaps if we residents could get a timeline of what various projects will be taking place, and even, Harry, that what you presented up here was really informative. I would love to see the neighbors get an explanation of those three possibilities of what can happen to the pipeline, because I don't think any of us, none of us, know about that. It'd be very nice to get it in written form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Coons, I have a question. With regard to the slurry, exactly what is this slurry? I assume it's some liquid fill that's going to be put in the pipe, mixed with something, but is it going to fill the pipe completely? Is there going to be hollow spots? Is there going to be, does it harden? Does it set?
We'll get an answer for you.
What happens?
Okay.
What is it? By the way, at the recovery center Friday night, we have coffee hour, 5 to 7. Everybody come.
All right. Can you answer that question?
The slurry is basically cement, paste, water, and air entranment. It's designed to fill the pipe completely and harden, not quite as hard as concrete, but it's, makes it completely, there's going to be no voids, and they'll fill the pipe completely.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have something to add.
Papi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. One thing I did want to address is, you know, your very serious comment around the odor.
Identify yourself for everyone here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Papiya Gamblin, Government Relations for PG&E. We, as we work with staff, we're providing technical, detailed technical information on how we plan to mitigate the smell in every step of projects that we're doing. So for the 1948 pipe, we've already provided that to staff, and then as we get additional direction on this project, we plan to provide the same level of detail on that mitigation. So we'll ensure that staff does receive that, and you'll be able to get detailed steps and technical information that the consultants can review, so that folks can be ensured that that experience will be mitigated.
To the chair. Papiya, I think would also be important, I know you mentioned staff to have the information, but the community, the neighborhood, the recovery center, the website, I think all those avenues need to have that same notification and information, so it is available to anyone at any time.
Yes, and I do hope to have open houses and meetings and things that we will coordinate with staff along with their project that they're conducting with the sewer and water, so that it's a comprehensive approach. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And if I could add, I mean, this is an exclusive neighborhood. We need confirmation that they are getting the information. I mean, even if it's just getting out there, and even if you're sending it to a certain address or whatever, there needs to be some follow-up to say, did you receive this information? Do you receive, do you understand this information? And I think not only for PG&E, but what we're doing also, you know, because there's going, there's going to be some gaps. I mean, if you assume that you're sending it out to every single resident, someone's going to come back and say, I didn't get it, or I didn't understand it, or I didn't pay attention to it. So I think it's important enough that they all know.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, staff has, you mentioned no formal action tonight. Well, what exactly are you looking for from us?
You're certainly welcome to take an action. We're looking for your guidance and your direction as to your preferred option, or whether it is your preference that we do some additional work in order to assess a broader interest on the part of the community.
Irene?
Thank you. I just want to touch on another piece. We talked about the disruption, but we didn't also talk about people who are doing construction. And if you are closing off some of the streets in front of these homes that are having construction work done, how's that going to affect people?
The, um...
Obviously, it will affect people, so...
Yeah. The portion of the street that would require full closure, again, is the piece that's between Clermont and Plymouth, and I think that there's one home that's finishing construction currently. We would phase that such that obviously we impact the homes that are under construction the least. A portion of that, you know, would have to probably get delayed if it was the full removal option. Again, under the hybrid option, the only portions that would be removed would be in areas where there are no fronting homes. So we wouldn't be dealing with an issue of disrupting construction, ongoing construction of those homes, under the hybrid option. But it would be a concern under the full removal option, you're correct.
Okay.
All right, the staff is looking for some action if we want to do it. Let me just start. Now that I hear the three options, I was sort of leaning towards hybrid, and mostly because everything achieves the same end. But it's more of an emotional thing. People in January really wanted that pipe out of that street, and I thought maybe the hybrid is the way to go. It doesn't really serve a whole lot of other purpose then to quell some emotions up there. But hearing what I heard tonight, I don't believe anybody really talked about hybrid too much. It sounded like, you know, get this thing taken care of, fill it with concrete if that's what it takes, make sure that as you fill it with concrete, you're not pouring gas smell into the neighborhood, and make sure that everybody's informed as you go along. I said many, many months ago at St. Robert's Church, within 48 hours of the explosion, that we're here to help you, and we will hold your hand one by one, if that's what you need. And we're still here to do that. So if we have to get a flyer in hand delivered as a city council, everybody up there, we're happy to do it. But my feeling is now, if it's okay with everyone here, and I want to hear from all of you, fill it, let's be done with it. Let's, I know someone said earlier this evening that she looks out her window and she sees the construction, which is a good thing, but it reminds her. I think, I think we start digging up the street for a pipe and disrupt the community even more, it'll probably remind her more of what happened. So my feeling is, I think we just fill this damn thing and get it done. It'll never be used again, and we have those assurances, it won't be if it's filled with concrete, and I just want to get it done. I want to get on with the rebuild and, not to forget the past, but to respect it and go forward. So that, those are my thoughts.
If I could, Ms. Mary, and I agree to a certain extent, but I didn't go through it. And I know we're trying very hard to feel what you're feeling. I would really like to hear from all, you know, not necessarily all residents, but I really like to hear from the Glenview, the people that live on Glenview, that drive on that street, that live, that live, you know, right there and have that pipe underneath. Because I don't know what you're, you know, what emotions you're dealing with in that. I didn't go through that. I mean, we witnessed it, a lot of it, but can't imagine what you've gone through. So it would be a really help to know what you feel, and if it's just fill the pipe and get on with it, so be it. But if there's someone out there that just has to have a section pulled out for their peace of mind and their, you know, for their closure and they're moving on, I think we need to take that in consideration.
Michael?
Mayor Wayne, I agree with you that the slurry method is probably, based on what we heard here and what we've read in the report, the most logical choice for us. But I also agree with the vice mayor that there is a psychological aspect to it. And in fact, the whole reason that we're even considering this is because there is a psychological aspect. So I would recommend that we proceed with the assumption that we would do the slurry, but allow maybe a short comment period where we might revisit this after allowing the neighborhood to comment on that decision, and allow us to come back. The last thing I want to do is delay this any longer than we have to, and I'd really like to see the neighborhood put back together, at least repairing what's in our power to repair. And so I wouldn't want to drag it out longer than necessary, but perhaps a short comment period would be, would be in order. The other thing I'd like to see is just confirmation from PG&E and from our staff that there is no possibility of contaminants from either the older pipe or the newer pipe if we were to leave them in the ground.
Okay, Rico?
I have some of the similar comments that Councilmember Salazar has. I'd like to get that information back from PG&E that said they will provide it to us, so we can make a well-thoughtful decision. I happened to be up on the 900 block of Glenview last night, and I looked down, knowing that we had this meeting, I was there for another reason, and was trying to visualize the pipe being removed. And I just was thinking, as the rebuilding is occurring, as you see people coming back, I just thought that would be too disruptive, back to that community again, the neighborhood. Slurry is something that I would be leaning toward at this point after having the presentation, but I also would like to, want to make sure, because I know, obviously, for those that live there on a daily basis or are trying to come back home, there's a lot of emotion. There's a, there's a pain that we've all suffered and you still suffer. And I would like that opportunity for at least folks to express what their views and opinions are, and at least have that option available. I think we've done it as a community and as a neighborhood, and I think we need to continue on that path. So I'd like to hear from everyone that wishes to give us their thoughts and advice.
Irene?
Thank you. This is a very difficult decision, especially since we did not have to live through what you all live through. I'm inclined to ask for a survey. I think we should ask the people who live there, from one end of the block to the other, what they would like. Our staff report shows the options very clearly. It talks about what the impacts are, it talks about how long something is going to take. Like Option 1 is four and a half months of 30 people every day coming in, trucks, closures. But if that's what it takes for everyone to feel better down the road in a year, maybe that's what we should do. The slurry takes three weeks, and there's little disruption, and the hybrid takes two and a half months, and there's a medium. So I think the people there should have a very clear-cut opportunity to see what's available, that what we're looking at. I'd be happy to walk up and down and hand out surveys if we want to do it that way. Maybe we could do it within the next two weeks and get opinions from people. So I appreciate the people who came here tonight and spoke. I think I'd like to hear from other people in the neighborhood as well.
Okay. So I believe this is consensus to do a short survey explaining what you explained tonight in very simple terms of the disruption, what's going to happen in the community, what's not going to happen if we do certain things. Number one, also, we want to get a report back from PG&E on potential contamination of existing pipes in there, and have assurances that if we slurry fill them, they will in fact be solid-filled and no chance of any type of contamination after that. fact be solid-filled and no chance of any type of contamination after that. So do you need any more direction, city manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, there are two more items that I believe the council was looking for from PG&E, just for the purpose of the record. The second item beyond the environmental contaminants is more detailed information about how the caps are secured and placed on the pipe ends to assure that there's no leakage. And then lastly, the details regarding the odor scrubbing procedure and the assurance that that should provide in lay language, how residents can be confident that the procedure that PG&E intends to put in to place to prevent odors is actually an effective, proven, and reliable procedure.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Irene?
However you make this survey up, I would suggest that you have a contact, either yours, a telephone number, an email address or something, that if people have questions about the survey or other things, that they can get ahold of you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we'll move right on to the next item.